Test, test.
I know, I mean, you're welcome to stay and talk about driveways.
Scottish law.
Good evening, if anyone wishes to speak before the council, please be sure to sign up before seven at the podium. The blue clipboard is for to speak at open forum and the yellow one is to speak on an agenda item.
I know.
Someone's doing that now.
Let me go get it.
It was like six o'clock or something?
I see things are kind of picking up. When you have a photo, I heard people from the public and playhouse. Absolutely for the youth. And how is Tunisian you still feeling about it? No, no. Hey, well, hey, hello.
I'm wondering if it's this.
Worse.
The other. Then I don't know. Okay, then I don't know.
I know series. Years was. Very much.
Why are you here?
Somebody take the, somebody taking the invitation?
Let you know, I'm not going to be here for the next two meetings.
Two next meetings? Okay.
Yeah, go take care of my father's.
Okay, but just states.
Take care of all of that. So I going on my sister's friend rate, but that is to be the same.
Where, where do you have to go? Okay.
And then.
Enjoy.
Be here for the next two weeks.
Okay. Yes, by the other side, what's up, Walter? You know, my good. Yes, Jackie had the baby.
My right thumb. But it's cold, she's always got. Ripping, yeah.
Will you join us at all?
I don't think at all.
Are we waiting for anyone to join us online? Call the vote, call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
Councilman Santin?
Here.
Councilman Fajad?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you. All right, rise, please, if you are able to join us for the invocation by Councilman Fajad.
We pray for the agenda set forth before us this evening and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there's honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak and the patience to listen receptively, empathically, when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter and a keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we're not only leaders, but also servants, that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Switch the flag.
Supposed to be on the right hand side of the speaker.
Possibly on the right, yeah.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Welcome to our March tenth regular meeting. To those of you that are joining us in the audience and those of you that are joining us virtually, we're so glad to have you with us. And we'll get started with awards and presentations. Our first item, four A, is the Yard of the Month Award for March twenty twenty five. And it goes to Richard Marquez at twelve oh two Dove Avenue. Is Mr. Marquez here? Come on up, please. Twelve oh two Dove Avenue. And we, let's get the rest of the council. We encourage all, all of our residents to go by and visit the beautiful yard, take a look. Thank you for beautifying our city and for encouraging others to beautify their gardens. Congratulations. Thank you again. And we want to encourage all residents to, whenever you have a beautiful yard, let, reach out and let our Parks Board know so that they can go by. We appreciate all the work the Parks Board does in identifying the yard of the month every month for us. Okay, our next presentation is by Mariana Cease. And she is with Miami Water Keepers. And the presentation is going to be about organizing, advocating for resilient solutions to protect South Florida's waters. Thank you for being here. I asked her to be here because, as you know, we've been working on our driveway ordinance. The county has also passed a permeability ordinance requiring municipalities and unincorporated Dade County to take measures to promote permeability. Our precipitation, our rainwater, when it falls, it should have the ability to percolate down through the ground to recharge our underground water supplies, our aquifers, and because we have so much development, this doesn't always happen. Permeability is really, really important to us for that, for our fresh drinking water, our groundwater supplies, but also to prevent flood control. If we allow the water to percolate down to the ground, it's less water that's running into our roads and causing these flood events that we have seen significant increase in in the past few years. So this is very important. Thank you so much for being here, Water Keeper. For anyone that doesn't know, it's an amazing organization that works, a nonprofit organization that works to protect South Florida waterways and our bays and does an amazing job. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Puente, Vice Mayor Vasquez, Councilman. Thank you, residents, for being interested in this topic. My name is Mariana Cease. I'm the Environmental Policy Specialist at Miami Waterkeeper, which, as Mayor Puente mentioned, we're an environmental nonprofit here in South Florida. And I'm just gonna give a little bit of an intro who we are in Miami Waterkeeper, so you guys know. We have three main focus areas, so we work towards obtaining clean water here in South Florida. Water that can be fishable, swimable, drinkable, so any threat to clean water, we try to be there, we try to tackle that and make sure that all the residents here in Miami Dade can have access to clean water. As you know, it's a big challenge and it takes everyone's effort for it. So thank you for being here today and being interested in this topic. We also work to protect thriving habitats. As you know, Florida is a very diverse state, especially South Florida. We have coral reefs, we have mangroves, we have wetlands. Miami Dade is the only county that's between two big national parks. We have the Everglades and we have Biscayne Bay National Park. So all of our water is interconnected and we work there to protect all the critical habitats that give us the environmental services that we all need, like breathable air, clean water, even recreational spaces. Many of you probably go to the beach on the weekends or go kayaking or go visit the Everglades. It takes a big effort to have all those spaces in a state that it's, that it's achievable. And we also work to obtain resiliency here in the city. As, as Mayor said, we have big flooding issues. We are facing extreme weather events such as hurricanes, such as flooding. We have more intense rainfall every year. So just building the city in order for it to be prepared for those events is something that takes a lot of heavy work, but we advocate for that through issues as the impervious surface ordinance that the county just passed in September last year. I don't know if you heard of the Back Bay Study, which is work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to make Miami more resilient to storm surge. So we work in all of those areas. And we do this by doing some science and research. We do a lot of water quality monitoring. I don't know if you've downloaded the guide called Swim Up, but it's where you can see if the beaches you go to are appropriate for swimming. So if you haven't done it and you are a visitor of the beach, I encourage you to do so. We give information to them, so the residents know if it's, if it's safe for them to go into the water. We also do a lot of policy and advocacy with the science. We gather with the science we create. We try to make policy solutions available in terms of legislation, litigation as well. And finally, the, my favorite part is education and outreach. So basically, talking to people, educating them in the issues that we care about. We consider that people are the best advocates for the community they live in. So just talking to them and sharing the issues that we live here in Miami, it's a great step for getting people involved. And just be after the little presentation, I want to start talking about previous versus impervious surfaces. So I have two pictures here, which I hope will make very clear the difference between.
Could you turn off the light? Thank you, or lower it? Thank you, you can see a little better. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone here present has heard about this two different terms or know the difference, but I think these two pictures there make it really clear the difference between an impervious versus a pervious surface. So basically, an impervious surface is think about concrete, think about asphalt, basically any surface that doesn't allow the water to percolate to the ground and just provokes runoff, for example, when it's raining. And as you know, when we have development, when cities grow, we tend to get more and more of these impervious surfaces through building roads, building parking lots, building homes. So this type of surface, obviously, it's needed for development, but what happens is that it doesn't allow rainwater to go to the ground to go to the aquifers. For example, here we live under a big aquifer, the Biscayne Bay Aquifer. That's where we get our drinking water from. So we are not allowing this aquifer to recharge from rainwater. Also, the previous, the impervious surface causes a lot of runoff. So when we get heavy storms, we get a lot of flooding. And that's probably an issue you'll have here in Miami Springs. When we have our rainy season here in Miami, probably you encounter a lot of flooding in different streets. And basically, that's the issue with impervious surfaces. Then we have pervious surfaces, which allows the water to go to the ground with, which recharges the aquifer that we talked about. Also, it avoids heavy flooding because the water, instead of running off through the ground, it just goes back to the ground and recharges the aquifer. And this is super important because, as you know, here in Miami, we have very heavy rainfall season that provokes a lot of flooding. And these rainy seasons are getting more intense each year. We have very heavy extreme weather events here. So just turning our sights to pervious surfaces as a way to deal with flooding and deal with these extreme weather challenges. It's a mind shift that we need to start having. Here is a map I found from FEMA, which is it, it states where, where the flooding is, or in twenty twenty, where the main areas of threat of flooding were here. And I did a zoom to Miami Springs, so I don't know if you can see here or even like kind of detect where you live, your streets. And it's very likely that you're in a flooding zone because, as you can see, the purple in the map is where there is risk of flooding. And as you can see, it covers a lot of, of the municipality, a lot of Miami Springs. And actually, here we have different kinds of flood zones. And we are in area A, AE, AH. All of those areas, A, according to FEMA, are high risk. So we are in high risk of flooding here in Miami Springs. So it's an issue that we have here. It's something that we cannot ignore. And these risk maps are even telling us that which zones are more likely to flood. So that is a good picture of where we need to maybe put a little bit more attention of. But it also signs to us that we cannot ignore flooding and we cannot keep putting impervious surfaces everywhere we go because the flooding issues that we have, that we already have to this day, and then are gonna be worse, are just gonna stay there if we don't do something about it. So just take a look at this map. I can share like the full map with you in case you're interested in other areas. But it's interesting to see if your home is here. As you know, that has heavy risks in, in terms of insurance, in, in terms of property value, but also in terms of risk for the population. And I just found this picture here of Miami Springs. It says it's Oakwood Drive and Forest Drive, under eight inches of rain after a heavy rainfall. So we do see that the city gets flooded, the streets where you guys live get flooded. And I want to talk a little bit more about the risks of flooding. It's not just that it's inconvenient for us and we have to get out of our homes and there's water everywhere. There's a lot of pollution issues with flooding. So everything you see on the streets, when there is stormwater runoff, it ends up getting into our drains. So for example, when you see chemicals there, when you see car oil, when you see pet waste, when you use fertilizer in your lungs that are, that is not biodegradable, all of that flows with, with, with the stormwater. And we, when we have impervious surfaces, that all gets into our drains. And here, living in Miami, that eventual, eventually ends up in our bay because we know the water goes into the canals. These canals eventually flow into Biscayne Bay. So we have issues such as algae blooms that I don't know if you know about, but basically, an excess production of algae that causes eutrophication, the lack of oxygen in the water that can kill a lot of wildlife. We've had serious events of fish kills. And that, that is caused in part because all of this stormwater is running off our streets and is not being reabsorbed into the ground. Once it's reabsorbs, the ground that it's there filtrates all of these chemicals, all of these pollutants. But we don't have that when we have impervious surfaces. So let's think a bit about the inconvenience that this is for us, but let's think also about the issues that this has in terms of pollution, in terms of polluting our bay, in terms of polluting our canals, in terms of the health hazard that it is having that polluted water next to our houses, for example. Also, heavy flooding can have threats to critical infrastructure. What happens if our schools flood? What happens if our libraries flood? What happens if the city hall floods and people cannot come here and have access to, to services that the, that the city hall provides? So heavy flooding is a big threat. And as we mentioned, it's exacerbated by impervious surfaces that we have more and more each day. What can we do to reduce the impact of this impervious surfaces? Well, start, start thinking the other way. Let's start thinking about pervious surfaces. So in here, I put an example, which it's pretty simple, right? It's just concrete with some spaces with grass that lets the water actually infiltrate to the soil. And in here, you can see a little diagram that explains really easily how this pervious surfaces work. So you have rainfall, it flows through this pervious spaces, it goes into the ground soil. And throughout of this soil, the pollutants that we talked about, the chemicals, the oils from your cars, the pet waste, this is all being filtered. It act, it's, it acts as a filter. And eventually, when it goes into the groundwater, we have clean water. And it's not only beneficial because of this filtering properties, but as we mentioned previously, we are also recharging our aquifer, our Biscayne Bay Aquifer. That's where we get our drinking water from. So instead of looking at stormwater as a threat, at some, as something that provokes flooding, we could look at it as an opportunity, an opportunity to recharge our aquifers, an opportunity to filtrate all of this hazards and chemicals that are being collected by rainwater. So this is why impervious surfaces, sorry, pervious surfaces are so important. And it's critical that we start integrating them into our infrastructure, into the way we build houses, into the way we build roads, into the way we build parking lots. So just like, let's start thinking about this mind shift and how we can incorporate it here in, in Miami Springs. We are one step ahead in Miami Dade County, actually, with this impervious surface ordinance that the mayor talked about. It's something that was just approved in September last year. And I want to tell you that it was a very big effort. It was a collective effort. A lot of organizations participated in drafting this ordinance. The county was there. The commissioners from the Board of County Commissioners also supported this ordinance. So it was a collective effort and it's this mind shift that I'm telling you about. It was people starting to think, how are we gonna face flooding? How are we gonna face heavy rainfalls? How are we gonna make our urban infrastructure much more resilient to the challenges we're facing? And I didn't want to bother you with all the details of the ordinance. If you want, I can send you a summary or something that explains a little bit more in detail its content. But these three points I have here, I believe, are the main content of this ordinance. So basically, it incorporates retention requirements for private and public developments, redevelopments, and substantial improvements. What does this mean? That any development that is happening, any redevelopment, any improvement that is major, will have retention requirements. This means that it has to retain a certain amount of stormwater. It cannot have more than what this ordinance allows in terms of runoff. So for example, if you're building a new home, this development will have to abide to these retention requirements. It also has a minimum permeability requirement, which means, I put this example here, so it's easy to exemplify. This example is in terms of single homes and duplex buildings. It needs to have at least twenty percent of pervious lot areas in lots that are less than five thousand square feet and twenty-five percent of this pervious lot area. So this diagram here is basically an example of how this works. So if this is your home, the green area would represent the twenty or twenty-five percent that you would need to have in terms of pervious surfaces. So what does this mean? What we mentioned, like this ground that has different holes for the water to be absorbed. And later on, I'm gonna talk about more examples of what could be a pervious surface. But this is something that we need to start thinking about when we build houses, when we build duplexes. In here, it's also for, for public development, so the county also has to abide to that. The city of Miami Springs also has to abide to that if it's doing any new development, construction, et cetera. And when, what I think it's very important is that municipalities in Miami Dade can participate in implementing this ordinance. And I heard you mention you have a driveway ordinance that plans to comply with this. So basically, what this ordinance requires is for municipalities. to submit their own ordinances before the end of the year if they want to regulate how the impervious surface ordinance can work in their own territories. And the municipalities can regulate, for example, single home building, duplex building. So I think this is an amazing way to start engaging the residents on how we can improve our previous surface overall in the in the city. And how can we get creative when we're talking about previous surfaces? It's not just this kind of 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 surface that I showed you here. It can take many forms. It can get as creative as you want. And it can have much more benefits than just the permeability of it. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Miami Springs to engage with the residents and to start thinking creatively on how we can achieve that permeability requirement that the ordinance has. I see you're already doing that by the driveway ordinance. I would love to to take a look at it and see what kind of creative and new solutions you're putting into work. But basically, this ordinance wants to tackle the challenge that we mentioned previously in terms of flooding, in terms of pollution, in terms of stormwater runoff. And we, as residents of Miami Dade, have an opportunity to participate and shape how we want to see a more resilient city. And when I talk about creativity, this is what I'm talking about. Green infrastructure is a great way to comply with this impervious surface ordinance. And here, I just put four examples of green infrastructure that has great permeability and that can be implemented as a way to comply with the permeability requirements that this new ordinance has. So we have, for example, bio soils that probably many of you know them as ditches. And we didn't care much about them in previous years. But now we're starting to see its usefulness when when they help us to absorb rainwater. And when that rainwater goes to the ground and it doesn't flood our streets. We also can have plant boxes, for example. Instead of having plain sidewalks, we could install plant boxes that can also, for example, increase our tree canopy in the city. That is a double benefit. We're increasing our tree canopy while we are avoiding our sidewalks to get flooded when it rains. And when we talk about previous surfaces and green infrastructure, we can think of these dual benefits. So for example, while increasing our tree canopy, we are also reducing heat islands that, as you know, are a big issue here in Miami. And the less tree canopy we have, the less vegetation we have, it has been proven that the hotter it feels for the population to walk in our streets. So this is a great solution. And it gets us, being creative, it also brings other benefits. We also have rain gardens. So basically, gardens that can absorb rainwater. We can have native plants there. You can also maybe win lawn of the month if you get creative with your rain garden in your front yard and comply with the impervious surface ordinance and create a nice oasis in front of your home where you can absorb rainwater and actually contribute to avoiding stormwater runoff, pollution, recharging our Biscayne aquifer just by by installing this kind of of green infrastructure in your houses. And another one we have here is permeable parkings. This is a city that has a lot of cars, a lot of parking space. Imagine what would happen if we started transforming our parking lots into these green spaces where water is reabsorbed, that where where water is not just a source of flooding or or runoff, where we have vegetation there. So just, I wanted to share these examples with you because I think it's a very good way of getting creative, of looking at other benefits when complying with the impervious surface ordinance. We can create green spaces. We can create community. We can create spaces where people go to exercise, to play, to play with their kids, to walk their dogs, all of this, while absorbing rainwater and having previous surfaces. So I'm happy to talk more about this. If you have any suggestions, if you've thought about how to address this ordinance, if you are not sure, we have a kit of different green storm infrastructure that we have shared with other municipalities. So please feel free to contact us whenever you want. We have all of our social media there if you want to follow up. We also have volunteer events. And I just put my email at the bottom in case you have any follow up questions. I'm happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mariana. And again, and I know Waterkeeper was instrumental in guiding the county in developing this ordinance that applies to all of us, to all municipalities. It's it's a really big task, but it has to be done. This isn't a choice anymore. It's like, we have to make sure that we, every single house, is doing their part to provide the groundwater that we need to supply our population, especially when our populations keep growing. So it's something that, and it's it's instrumental in the next few years. It's not something, you know, way off. And so thank you again for the work you're doing that. We're taking this seriously in Miami Springs. Okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. And it's open forum. And we have three people signed up to speak at open forum. Okay. So the first one is Mariette Chamro Mendez. Here, please come forward. Welcome.
Shayaab. I made you guys presentations for each of you as well. And my mom wrote a handwritten note. She's in her 70s, so she didn't come to the meeting, but she wrote you guys a note.
Thank you. And let me just, I always say this at the beginning of open forum, and I didn't. Open forum, everyone has three minutes to speak, please. And also understand, you have three minutes to speak, anyone at open forum. And also understand that it's one way conversation. We, you, it's an opportunity for you to talk to all of us at the council. Let us know your concerns, your comments, your complaints. And we're all ears. And also for the residents of Miami Springs and anyone else participating in the meetings to hear you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time, by the way, Miami Springs. I've been living here since I was five years old. This is the first time I've come to a meeting. So a security camera has been placed without my consent, looking into both of my backyards. As a female and a neighbor, I feel very uncomfortable with the surveillance. And the installed camera and height and angle are both, I can't cover them in plain sight from my private backyards. My mother and I live next door to each other, and my father just died of cancer. I took care of him until his last days. And enjoying my backyard is like a simple pleasure for me. So I'm here kind of fighting for my mom as well. If you can see from the image, our new neighbor with the new construction, he does not have any permeable services. That's not the point. But he has a security camera that's 20 feet up in the air. And it has a wide angle lens, so it sees into my mom's backyard and mine. He won't take it down. He has over 14 other cameras. So we just want the one looking over our backyard and mine to be taken down if possible. And thank you for listening to me. I kind of think it's an invasion of privacy. And as women, we're already not really safe on the streets. So at least in Miami Springs, in our backyard, like, we can sit under our mango tree and we're not being filmed. So that's just what I was trying to explain to you guys. So I made you guys a little presentation. My dad worked for Eastern, and he built airplane engines for a really long time. So yeah, this is the first time I'm like standing up for my mom. So that's why I'm here. And she wrote a note also to you guys, if you guys can read it later.
We will, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is Maricela Mendez. Here.
Oh, yeah, my mom wrote you guys a letter.
Oh, that's her letter. Okay, all right, thank you. Neri Owens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Neri Owens, 169 Corrigan Drive. Today I have a point of information. As I was looking through the campaign treasures reports, I noticed that one of the candidates had a contribution of $5,000 listed. I am not going to name the candidate. I'm speaking so that all the candidates, if they're listening, will know that that exceeds, the maximum should be $3,000. And we still have time to remedy this. The city clerk's in charge of election. So she may be able to either find out from the supervisor of elections or one of the committees downtown on ethics. The Ethics Committee might be able to tell you how to remedy it. But you've got time before the election. There are some penalties involved, and I only have three minutes. I'm not reading that part of the ordinance. Our city does not have a threshold. Miami Dade County Code, Section 12.5 Campaign Contributions and Expenditures says, except as otherwise provided by the Home Rule Charter or by ordinance adopted by the commission, the provisions of the election laws of the state of Florida regarding campaign contributions and expenditures shall apply to elections for the office of Mayor Miami Dade County and all of that. Florida statutes, electors and elections campaign financing, Florida statute 106.08, contributions, limitations on subsection 1A. Except for political parties or affiliated party committees, no person or political committee may in any election make contributions in excess of the following amounts. One, to a candidate for statewide office or for retention as a justice of the Supreme Court, $3,000. Then it goes on in 11A. States, a county, a municipality, or any other local governmental entity is expressly preempted from enacting or adopting contribution limits that differ from the limitations established in subsection 1, which is $3,000. So I bring this to your attention. I think you can remedy it. I feel like $5,000 for, to be elected to an office for two years is an extreme amount of money, and some of it could be given back. And maybe the report could be modified or refiled or whatever the supervisor of elections has to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we have no one else signed up for public comment. So we'll move to Agenda Item 8A. And it's a public hearing. We have an ordinance to be read.
Mayor, I believe we have to do 6A for the approval.
Oh, thank you. I skipped over that. Thank you. All right, 6A. Approval of the regular meeting count, regular council meeting minutes for February 24th.
Good, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the council minutes for February 24, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move now to the public hearing to item 8A. We have a second reading.
Yes, in ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter 150 zoning code of the city's code of ordinances by amending section 150-002 definitions in section 150-016 off-street parking facilities, paving and drainage, lighting, landscaping, and minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Off-street parking requirements for single-family residential and duplex zoning districts relating to driveway design, vehicular parking, and permeability requirements providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? Anyone virtually, Erica?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on this item? This is the driveway ordinance. We've worked on for several weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to thank the council for working on this. I think it's a very, very needed step for step in complying with our permeability requirements as a community. So call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And I wish to thank our city planner Sylvia and her team for working very, very hard on this for several months to come to something that that we can vote on. So thank you. All right, item 8B, another resolution, a public hearing.
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving an agreement with Redspeed Florida LLC for the installation and operation of speed detection systems for enforcement of speed limit violations occurring in eligible school zones, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, providing for authorization, and providing for an effective date.
Good, Chair.
Yes, sir. Let me open for a public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm opening this item for public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone virtually, Erica?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve Resolution 8B.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to the Agenda Item 9, the consent agenda. Are there any, is there any item that someone would like to pull for discussion? Now, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 9A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. New business under Agenda Item 11, an ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter 150 zoning code of the city's code of ordinances to correct the Scrivener's Error in Ordinance Number 1109-2018 relating to the Minimum Building Site Area Nonconforming Setback Regulations within the R-1A, R-1B, R-1C, and R-1D single-family residential zoning districts, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and council, this is a correction as it's noted in the title of ordinance 1109-2018. As I shared with you all in your briefings, in reviewing the code as recently as for a recent variance that the council heard, I think just last month, we realized that the ordinance that was adopted in 2018 had a couple of Scrivener's errors. So one related to the minimum lot size for for sites. And then the other was with respect to the continuation of legal nonconforming setbacks. And so what this ordinance aims to do is correct what was not codified at that time. And so the reasons for that seem to be that it was a bad copy paste job. There was no intent in 2018. And when you look at the ordinance, there was no intent to change what the minimum lot size requirement was for a building site. Each of your residential zoning districts has a different minimum lot size. So you go from R1A at 10,000 square feet to R1B at 7,500, R1C at 6,500, and R1D at 5,000. And that wasn't intended to change. But yet, when it, when the ordinance was codified, it was codified with 10,000 square feet throughout. Our our village planner, our city planner at that time and for the last, I guess, seven years, whether it was our prior planner or our current planner, has acknowledged this error. And so we're taking the opportunity to correct that now so that it's clear in municipal code when people go and and look. So there's, there's no real policy change there, just making that correction. The other thing is to address the continuation of legal nonconforming setbacks. And when this ordinance was 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 done in 2018, the ordinance addressed the continuation of these setbacks. And it was placed under a poorly worded heading of rear setbacks. When we went back and When we went back and listened to the discussion at council and the presentation of the then planner, we heard that there were policy arguments for extending, having this ability in the rear and side yards. So even though it was titled in the ordinance as side yard, the discussion addressed both. And so we believe that that is, that was also an error in the ordinance, and we're taking the opportunity to correct that. So the document that you have in front of you addresses it throughout all four residential zoning districts. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know Sylvia and I are going to be happy if this is approved, because it addresses some things that unfortunately were not as clear as they should have been.
Okay. Is there a motion, or any-
Motion.
Comments, questions for Heidi or Sylvia?
Yeah, motion to approve Ordinance 11A, first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Heidi and Sylvia, for catching this, for updating where we need to. In a city our age, we need to continually update items. So call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to 11B. Joint deferral, joint request for a deferral of the April 28th meeting?
To the April 28th meeting. So as I shared with all of you about two weeks ago now, we had a Board of Adjustment meeting where the board considered an administrative appeal. Under our code, that board's recommendation is supposed to be heard by the city council. We had previously notified, we had published notice, that the city council's consideration of this recommendation would be heard tonight. However, when we looked at the code a little further and realized that the timing didn't work out from a notice perspective for tonight, we spoke to the applicant, Ms. Ferreira, and her council, and we have jointly agreed to request from the city council that we defer the council's consideration of the board's recommendation to April 28th. And the reason I'm saying that date certain is for a few reasons. We want to make sure that the same council that hears the board's recommendation, if there's an appeal of that recommendation to the city council, that it be the same city council that hears it. And so the other reason is it gives us time to actually adequately notice the hearing, should there be one.
Any questions for Heidi on this? Okay. Do we need a vote on this, or just-
Just a motion to approve the Item 11B.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
To approve it or to defer it?
To defer it. To defer the, to approve the request for a deferral.
Correct.
Motion to approve 11B and defer second for the item.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we move to Item 12, 12A, a vote of confidence for the city clerk, as required as by our city charter. And the city clerk is also requesting a salary increase. And this is something I was asking JC, because we don't approve salary increases for anyone else, the council, except for city clerk. Now, the city manager is someone that we hire, and that comes before us, but the city clerk position, and I guess it differs, JC, you were explaining?
The city clerk's, in the charter, is a charter official, and is selected and appointed by the mayor and council.
Okay, but not the city clerk staff?
Not the staff, no, correct.
Okay. Okay, so the vote of confidence is something that's required by charter, and then the salary increase, the merit increase, is something that our city clerk is requesting. So the request that Erica and the vote of confidence, I am 100% she is exceptional. Just follows through on everything you ask for, is very quick, very knowledgeable, very organized, which is certainly a requirement of being a city clerk. And this year, you started with the passport. Your office started doing the passport renewals, passport acceptance, what is it called? Passport Acceptance Facility? Okay, for new passports and passport renewals. And I understand that they're bringing in revenues. They're very successful. We just started in December, right, with the soft opening?
The mid-December, yes.
Okay, so that's been great that we're doing that for, not just for our residents, that's a service for anyone. Anyone can come and get their passport applications, or apply for a new passport, or get their passports renewed in Miami Springs, which is a terrific service, and it encourages others to visit our city, visit our restaurants, our shops. So I, my full vote of confidence, Erica. The salary increase is, if you look at the chart that she's provided with the other cities, it's kind of surprising, some of the cities that are very similar to us, how much less they pay. And of course, some of the other ones that are, you know, City of Miami, Beach, and City of Miami, Coral Gables, how much more they pay. The salary, the merit, well, it's a salary increase of 5%. There will be a, as we've had in several years in the past, is a COLA adjustment, COLA raise in September, right, JC? I'm guessing you're planning to put that in the budget again?
Yes, that would be in September. But I mean, I'm not talking budget right now. We don't know-
No, I know, but that is something that is-
Correct.
A given also. So with that, and the expected COLA, that would bring our city clerk in it. And for me, it's comparable as to what we're paying our other department directors. It's not just one. So I would like to suggest salary increase of 3% instead of 5%. And I'm open to, obviously, this is a discussion. Okay, we have a vote of confidence. Let's do that. Let's go ahead and do the vote of confidence.
The vote of confidence first, okay?
Yes. To get started, is there a vote of confidence?
Yeah, so, I mean-
Do we need a motion for the vote of confidence? Okay, let's do that separately, the vote of confidence.
Okay, motion to provide a vote of confidence for the city clerk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, so Erica does a wonderful job. I would have been happy to discuss doing it together with the salary increase, but she does a great job. She's very organized. She has a good team around her, and they work very well under her leadership, and she's very responsive. So 100% vote of confidence for me.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second?
I'm sorry?
We have a first and a second. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there, yes, sir.
Okay, and we're going to talk about the salary?
Yes.
I think it should, the 5% to me is fine, considering, you know, the added scope of work that we've given them with this facility, which is going to only add more strain and to our own staff right now, and they're all handling that. And she has to be the one, at the end of the day, who's also taking a part in that as a leader. So to me, I'm fine with the 5%.
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the increase of 5% for the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
All right, and our next item is 12B, a vote of confidence for the city attorney is also required by our city charter. And I'll start it off with our city attorney and her team, Wyserota. And so many attorneys that work with us on, they specialize. The breadth and depth of their firm has been instrumental in helping us get through several issues continually, well, all year long. But behind the scenes, too, as all of you know, we reach out to our city attorney continually to discuss issues, to get information, to form our, help us form our decisions. So I'm very appreciative of the support that they provide.
Good to hear.
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve 12B, vote of confidence for the city attorney, as required by the sections listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fajet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we move to, this was such a fast meeting. Is it really not even eight? It's that, you know, when we switch to that new time or whatever, yeah, you're right. Let's not jinx it.
We're waiting for something.
Okay, report, city attorney.
I just want to thank you all for your vote of confidence. No other report tonight. Thank you.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a few updates. The Veterans Memorial is still looking at the end of the month. Will be cutting the ribbon and welcoming visitors to visit and pay tribute to the veterans. So, and it's looking really nice. I was, I went out there, was out there last week, and I'm very impressed and very pleased with the way it's turning out. The committee did a great job. You've been probably receiving some emails today about, from the Hook Square Contractor. Just know that I'm going to be having a meeting tomorrow to address these issues. We're really, we're like at 90% complete. There's only a few items left to be done. And well, I'm having a meeting tomorrow to try to bring that one home. And the last thing is, a few weeks ago, we went up to Washington DC. We made, one of the people that we met with was the staff, I think it's the deputy director, staff director for the Committee on Veteran Affairs. And they reached out to us, asking if, because they're going to be at the VA, visiting, doing like a, well, they're going to be visiting. And so we, they asked if we can, if we wanted to host them and have like a listening session for veterans in our area. They want to know some of the issues that veterans are facing. They want to know if they, you know, how things can be made better financially, medically. So I said, yeah, absolutely, we'd like to do that. And it looks like it's being scheduled for the 21st. It's a Friday at 9:30. I wanted to, Mayor, after your coastal mayor's meeting at the mansion, I wanted to use the mansion. And they graciously said, yeah, you know, we'd love to have you guys have some coffee and pastries or something. And I asked Councilman Vasquez and former Councilman Best, those are the veterans I know here. They have, we have a committee already. So I think they're going to participate in it, even Councilman Block. I'm going to reach out to Senator Avila, you know, to hear from them. And we're also, I guess they're also going to invite some others, some other veterans from the county. But I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm really excited for that, for that day. So just want to let you know, and it'll be on Friday, the 21st, at 9:30.
Good to hear.
Yes, sir.
I was delighted when JC called me and told me about this, because it's not every day you get a representative Department of Veterans Affairs down here in South Florida, and especially in Miami Springs. So I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to sharing and also asking questions. And I'm sure our veterans community beyond Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens, who can, we can reach out to, and Hialeah and other places to come by and have this opportunity, especially because there's always so many concerns about things. And I don't have any complaints about the VA hospital. Some people may have, but still, it's a great opportunity. I'm glad. The city manager and his initiative, build it up. And so I'm going to be there with bells and whistles and welcome, welcome the deputy director.
Good to hear. Actually, we're probably thankful to our federal lobbyists. Sometimes, you know, sometimes we take these things for granted, but having relationships with others outside our community lead to other things, you know? At the end of the day, it didn't, we didn't need it to finish his memorial, but it might have been a good time. We did have some obstacles to have this contact all of a sudden who's now, because of a little bit of an interaction that we had with them, that he wants to come to us first. I'm sure a lot of other cities went up there and visit, so the things that sometimes we take for granted, but we're glad that we were able to.
Yeah, it really was a great visit. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and that's going back to the Veterans Memorial. You, the residents may have noticed the swales, the sides of there being dug up. Well, that's additional parking. We're finishing up all the pervious, well, the pervious, the grasscrete pavers. We're making, pervious, sorry, pervious, the grasscrete pavers that are pervious. We're going to finish both sides. Right now, we did, I guess, small sections, and we're finishing that entire block. So it's going to be really nice and help for the, help the circle.
Tammy?
March 13th, we have the voter outreach event from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Adult Community Center. So it's a good time to get everybody to understand the changes and the vote by mail.
It got moved Friday, the 14th.
It did, okay. Sorry about that.
At the senior center.
Sorry about that. Okay, then also, April 5th, there's registration right now at the Aquatic Center for a community rummage sale. So if you want to sign up for that, you can at the Aquatic Center. Also, the River Cities 5K Walk Run, there's also open registration for that at the Community Center. And then also, there's open registration for the Easter egg hunt. Please sign up for that as well. That's all.
Thank you, Tammy. Erica?
Yes, first and foremost, thank you so much for the vote of confidence. It's truly a pleasure to work with all of you, and especially for the residents. So thank you. Just to follow up on what Tammy said on the outreach event, yes, it's Friday, the 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Some of the services available will be registering to vote. You can update your vote by mail ballot information, your address, any information that goes into registering to vote. Early voting, just a reminder, early voting starts May 28th, I'm sorry, March 28th and 29th here at City Hall from 8:00 to 4:00. And just to give you an update on passports, just two and a half months in, we've processed 500 applications so far. So it's been fantastic.
Erica, what percentage of that, more or less, do you know, is residents compared to visitors?
We try not to look at the addresses on the applications, but there's a good portion of residents, but a lot coming out from, I'm just going to throw out, Doral, yes, Medley, Virginia Gardens, just are the ones that are mostly using the service. And that's just with one window, too. So it's constantly, you know, between us-
This is still in City Hall?
Yes.
But we're going to be moving to across-
Hopefully, that's the, that's the goal.
I'm still in the process of working with the landlord, negotiating an agreement, so I can bring it to the council.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's start with Councilman Santin.
Like always, this weekend, we had great city events that make our little town so great. The Taste of the Springs is great, and the barbecue showdown. So I think we got a couple more events coming up. I know Tammy mentioned a couple, but also we have a cleanup, which is coming with the Lions Club, March 29th. The Rotary is also participating and helping, and we're going to try to get as many volunteers to go out there and clean up. It does a lot of good, and you get surprised at how much junk people throw in our canals and rivers and stuff. So just get involved. So when you see out there, you know, try to do your best to get in there. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Fajet?
So just wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Bravo, who had a baby, had a little boy. So we're happy for her. I also really enjoyed the barbecue throwdown. It benefited the Optimist Club, who gives back all of the money that they, that they raise. They give it back to support youth sports and kids in need, and so, great event. And then on Sunday, the Taste of Springs event was wonderful to benefit the Women's Club, who also gives back to the community through their scholarships and all the benevolence that they do. So- So great events are the backbone, you know, by our civic and service organizations. That's a, that's the backbone of our community. So they were great events. Was happy to present this, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
One quick thing on the, on the VA rep visit. If, you know, schedule permitting, we'd like for him to see our, both of our memorials. You know, to to, that would be, that would be nice for him to see.
I'll try to work.
How a smaller town treats its veterans, right, and and recognizes. No, just one last thing. Yesterday, I attended an event at the Aquatic Club for Ben Jarrell. Ben is a contemporary of my son, both, you know, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, recently graduated from the Firefighters Academy and has been assigned to North Miami. And he has an idea, and I'd like to just share it, not for discussion, we'll just, maybe I'll bring it up as an item next time. He'd like to do a veteran slash first responders run. You know, we have the, our two memorials and then Stafford Park and the, and the, the fire, the first responders project that one of the Eagle Scouts did. So I just want to share that thought. I told him I'd, I'd bring it forward. I did speak to Erica about it, maybe a Memorial Day kind of event, because we've got already three different runs or trots in the city. But I'll, I'll, I'll work with Erica and Ben and see maybe how we'll bring it back for the next meeting, my last meeting. And so that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention, we had the Small Business Summit on February twenty sixth with the Rotary Club. We partnered with the Rotary Club and the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the city hosted it at the golf course at the Country Club. It was really successful, excellent opportunity to find out a lot of ways that small businesses can kind of mix in. Look, we're already having the tourists here at our hotels. And our hotel, surprisingly, the forty percent figure was thrown out by the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau of cruise passengers that are staying in our hotels. So the Port Miami is going to be reaching out and working with us. They want to let those cruise passengers know that when they're staying at these hotels to go on cruises, they've got a great community, a city, restaurants, shops, you know, walkable paths and everything that is right there behind them. And that gets lost a lot of times because, you know, they're staying there and they're near the airport, near the port. But it was a really great business, small business summit. And I want to thank the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau for putting it together and also for the Rotary Club for partnering with us, who are the equivalent of, we don't really have a Chamber of Commerce in Miami Springs, but the Rotary Club are business owners. And so, and and I'm saying, Councilman Sante, because you're the president of the Rotary Club right now, but Councilman Fahad is also a member of the Rotary Club. So kind of like so many of our civic clubs that we all are part of them too is going to be, and Adriana is going to be the president-elect, and the Women's Club, the same thing, you know, that the Lions Club and and the Optimist Club. So thank you. Also, we had the Coastal Mayor's Breakfast Meeting at the Curtis Mansion. We had Coastal Ma, you know, we're all coastal mayors in South Florida, so it's thirty four mayors of thirty four municipalities in South Florida. It's a meeting that we have every few months to get together. Somebody hosts it. I was in charge of hosting it this last time and we held it at the Curtis Mansion for lunch. It was the Curtis Mansion just shown. Well, the meeting was excellent. We had speakers from FIU Water Keepers, South Florida Water Management District, talking about permeability and blue ways, not just the coast, you know, some of our cities in in South Florida are coast cities, but a lot of them, we're a little bit further in. It's still the coastline. It's like, if you think of Jacksonville, which is one big city, you know, two miles in, three miles in, it's still a coastal city. But talking about the blue ways, which we all have the canals that either are impacted by the bay and the Everglades, or they impact, it works both ways. And of course, the permeability issues, so we can't any longer ignore these issues. It's going to seriously impact the quality of life in South Florida in the next few years if we don't take this seriously. So I wanted to thank the Coastal Mayor's Group and Mayor Omar Nickerson and Mayor Rachel Streitfeld, who are the two mayors who initiated this group three years ago and really worked behind the scenes to pull off every meeting. The other thing is JC and I met with our new tax collector this last week. Was it this last week? It seems like a long time ago. So many things are constantly happening. Dariel Fernandez and you know, they're, it appears to us they're misunderstanding the standard in South Florida. A lot of the municipalities are in agreement that municipalities are exempt from the two percent that they want to charge us. The tax collector's office reads the state statute a little differently, so there's going to be some work back and forth on there. But it would be a significant hit to us, to our budget this year. The other thing is I want to encourage all the, all of you on the council to get current with the Live Local Act of changes that are taking place in Tallahassee right now with the legislators. You need to learn about everything that's going on, how it's, you know, going to impact us. And be sure to reach out to your legislators, establish those connections and reach out if you have any concerns about these things because it is pretty shocking. And I can want to thank the Women's Club for hosting the Candidates Forum for our community. This is something that they do, like all of our civic clubs do so much more than you can believe, just not for our communities, but for everyone. And the Candidates Forum is something that the Women's Club has been hosting for, I don't know how many years. Every time we have an election, they did a fantastic job. I know it was at the, at the Rebecca Sosa Theater, very well attended. And it really provides our community an opportunity to to hear about all the candidates, our future leaders, and, you know, and help them make their choices. And the Women's Club for hosting the Taste in the Springs. You mentioned a fantastic event that it's not just Springs residents that, I mean, Springs restaurants that participate, but in the surrounding areas. And really, it's a fun event. I wasn't able to participate this year because we had other plans that day. But it just brings attention to how many choices of how much fun there is to do in our community and in the surrounding areas. So thank you for that. And with that, I wanted to wish Councilwoman Bravo and her family, congratulations, if she's listening, and I doubt she is. Congratulations on your new addition, on your baby boy to your family. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.